Or visual. Needs. Participate. Are you guys? You see none, then we'll go ahead and start with the AM zero zero one one dash two two. Staff may begin whenever they're ready.
Commissioners, good afternoon. We're here to discuss a compliant amendment. Um, from rural residential to neighborhood commercial. The border counter revised code twelve dash two one six, staff and the governing bodies shall review the particular facts and circumstances of each proposal submitted. And shall determine whether there is adequate evidence that the the proposal. Is in accordance with the general and the specific. Objectives of the comprehensive plan. The applicant has proposed a comprehensive plan amendment from rural residential to neighborhood commercial for the purposes of. Being able to pursue his own change to expanding existing storage facility. That was constructed approximately two thousand one. So the current uh comp plan designation is rural residential, um and this is envisioned with comp plan. To be areas provided for residential development. Urban services are not available and slopes may vary up to thirty percent. These areas include hazardous areas and critical wildlife habitats for lower densities reduce potential impacts to resources and exposures to loss. Of property or lives. Small scale agricultural uses and residential developments are permitted. Our plan of vision's neighborhood commercials. Areas um to look like can be designed to provide for light commercial uses to serve the needs of rural communities. And tourist trade without adversely affecting residential neighborhoods. Urban services and primary transportation systems such as state highways and major and minor collector roads are required. In order to go to the neighborhood commercial designation. So some background on this particular parcel, it is seven point two acres, it is owned. Rural five, it has a land use designation of rural residential and it is platted. Access is on Battle Drive, which is a private. Gravel uh road adjacent to Highway forty one. Some environmental features about this. Property does not contain any map slopes, however, it does contain a map wetland and a water course that runs through it. They're on the southeast side of the property in the blue line. Is served by an individual well and individual septic. Fire protections afforded through Spirit Lake Fire District. Power is through Vista Utilities and is within uh Bonner County School District number eighty three. The soil type. On this property is prime farmland, is well suited to irrigated crops, but is marginally suited for non irrigated irrigated crop irrigated crops. Right? Um. Uh, these were the agencies that were routed for comment on this project. Idaho Department of Tr- or Transportation Department, Idaho Department of Water Resources and DEQ all submitted comments. The V C Utilities. Idaho Department of Fish and Game, Spirit Lake Fire District. All submitted no comments, all their agencies did not respond. No public, one, a public comment was received in support of this proposal. Findings facts have not changed since the time the staff report was prepared. Nor have the conclusions of law. Staff found that this proposal is consistent with the comprehensive plan. As well as the planning, the planning commission voted unanimously to recommend approval on this project. That includes my presentation commissioners, I can take any questions.
Okay, the commissioners have any questions for staff? Uh applicant, is there an applicant here that? You have to, you have to go to the microphone and do it by yourself. You don't have, you don't have to speak.
No, I apologize. Okay. Katie from Glahy and I'm supposed to be presenting for this, I don't know if I'm doing that here or up there and I apologize. Is that the time for this?
We wish, you have visual aids like a PowerPoint or something. Oh, however you want to do it. Can you do an interpretive dance?
Um.
I did an interpret dance one time and then. Public government only voted for me not to do that again.
So I. I don't know if. I do have a PowerPoint, I don't know if it. Made its way over here yet. Cause. Yeah, I'm sorry.
When did you submit it?
Travis was supposed to submit it last week before. And I thought I didn't see you sitting there just now, did that happen? The PowerPoint? No.
It sounds like we're down, yeah, we're down to the interpretive dance.
Well, you got your dance, there's an order.
Is it there?
I did not think about that until. Making my way up. Oh, crumbs, I, yep.
Hard as part is picking the right song for the interpretive dance. That'll be the theme for the day.
It's Wednesday.
I don't want to be thinking ahead, Jeremy, with your dance.
Mm hmm. And click. So you may just have to scroll.
Okay.
With this right here.
That works.
Okay.
Alright, um. My name's Katie, even though Travis's name is still on the PowerPoint, I apologize for that. Uh. Katie Keeny from Glahy and Associates. So you can see. Our proposed site plan for. The. New mini storages, there's already a couple there. And where the client wishes to build. Additional units wouldn't encroach on the wetlands. Which is a good thing. Um. Commercial use table is. There with me, sorry guys, I'm. A little nervous. Um.
We'll start making funny and doing about half.
Perfect, perfect. Um. Basically just changing this to neighborhood commercial. Gets it in line better so that they can, the client can just apply for a permit. Rather than having to come back and. Apply for another conditional use permit down the road. This just gets everything out of the way so that they can come back and apply for the zone change. And just. Be in compliance all the way around. What we aim for, um. Project location. Is south, I believe, south of Old Town. A little bit north of Blanchard there. Off of forty one. Current zoning is rural five. Um. Comprehensive is rural residential. So. We're applying for neighborhood commercial, just that's. What fits best rather than just a regular general commercial. Uh, neighborhood commercial comprehensive planned use designates designed provide light commercial use to serve the needs of rural communities. Um, without adversely affecting residential neighborhoods, urban services and primary transportation systems. State highways, major minor collector roads are required, which it meets along forty one there. Um. It meets all of the goals and objectives. Listed here. Won't adversely affect any public services. I T D, they. It wasn't added in here in time, but we did get permission back from I T D for from that encroachment permit. So. There, there is that. Um, it doesn't affect any adjoining land. So. And our next step with this upon approval, if it gets approved will be the zone change. So. Um. Here's a couple. Other areas in Bonner County that do have. This. Neighborhood commercial. Where they have. They're zoned R five. Or R ten. I guess. But. A lot of them are just kind of out in the middle of nowhere like this one. And. Have similar uses on them. Again, uh, this is. Zone suburban. And then this, this little guy out here off of DuFert. Just. Yeah. So in the rural districts, um. Established to allow low density residential uses that are compatible with rural pursuits. Um. We don't meet a lot of these requirements. Uh, there's no R ten, well, the parcels aren't R ten. Um. And then the commercial district. In conclusion. Rural residential to neighborhood commercial location. Is adequate and does fit within the goals and objectives of the comprehensive plan. Um, and again, we did get that permit from I T D for. The encroachment off of the highway. Questions?
Has that been submitted?
Uh, not yet, we just got it back late last week. I, I can submit it as soon as you would like, but. And I apologize for that, that is. That is my fault.
Sure, I guess we could. Be addressed and. This is just a. Um. It would be alright. Right. This is the zone change, this is the conflict. Sorry, the Montel here.
Yep.
So Commissioner, I think it's noteworthy that in two thousand five, they should probably capture this property to be neighborhood commercial already since the existing. Um, storage units were there.
Right.
So that's why we're here today for the comp plan and then we'll be back in a. Few more weeks for the zone change because that can have submitted for that.
And, and at that time.
The encroachment.
That I T D permit will be either required or be a uh.
Right, um, at the B L P stage, that'll be captured because this will be a permitted use if they're able to achieve the comp plan amendment today and then the zone change down the road. Um, and then the encroachment permit will be picked up at the building patients stage.
For the project. Make sure that. That. We do meet what I T D talking about and make sure that since they haven't submitted it. We condition it here or later.
Uh, we're just here this afternoon to discuss the comprehensive uh mask change, so. We can condition. The B L P to have encroachment permit from I T D. I, I believe it probably will be. There's opportunity to capture that at the zone change level if we have to do that with the development agreement.
Okay.
So it will be captured at that point. Okay, I haven't seen it.
Okay. Any other questions? See none, you're good. You lived through it. Okay, um, owner's representative is the owner here as well, do they wish to speak? You don't have to. You don't have to dance either, I'm just kidding. Okay, then we'll go ahead and move on to public comment. Um, will a public comment works, uh, you have three minutes. We'll start out with those who are in favor of the project, if anybody wishes to speak in favor.
One of those.
Hey, nobody online? Do this one? Okay. Anyone neutral? You have to ask rarely, we still haven't found anyone neutral. Anything? Um, anyone here that wishes to speak in opposition to this? Okay, well, since there were no comments, there's no need for rebuttal. Um, we'll go ahead and close uh to deliberate. Go ahead, who wants to start?
Um, this. Seems to me all the criteria that. You know. As stated by staff, this should have been picked up, I know where these sort of stories are, it should have been. I think that that's the thing I struggle with is that. There is a use that would bore uh the two thousand eight or two thousand five. All plan. Um. Came into effect and yet we didn't pick this stuff up, this is the stuff that we should have, it should have been listed.
Yeah, we've got a number of places in the county where there's, yeah, there's only map doesn't. Jive, what section of the ground.
But I'm alright with it.
Okay. Steve?
No, very often.
Yep. Yeah, it meets all the uh all the proper requirements within code. And the comp plan, so I have no problem with it as well, and if uh. One of you guys wants to give me a motion for approval, we'll go ahead and accept it.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, I move to approve this project file AM zero zero. One one dash two two. For a comprehensive plan amendment from rural residential to neighborhood commercial, finding that it is in accordance with general and specific objectives of the Bonner County Comprehensive Plan. And Bonner County Revised Code is enumerated in the following conclusions of law, based upon evidence submitted up until the staff report was prepared and testimony received at this hearing. The further move to adopt the findings and the fact, conclusions of law as set forth in this staff report and direct planning staff. Written. Staff to draft written findings and conclusions reflect this motion. Have chairman, the chairman sign and transmit to all interested parties. Actions that not result in the taking.
Here we have a motion, a second roll call vote. Aye?
Aye.
Aye. Yeah, motion passes, now we'll go for the comprehensive plan map resolution adoption. We have a resolution number? Twenty four?
Mr. Chairman, I moved approved resolution twenty twenty two dash ninety four, amending the Bonner County.
Here we have a motion, a second roll call vote. Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes, but what did you say? Commissioner, what? Then I, oh man, maybe my.
Read.
I know. Okay, and that concludes that file, we'll go ahead and move on to uh. V S zero 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 one dash two two. As I recall, we were just waiting for a uh. Letter from Department of Lands. Let's do your thunder, Daniel, but.
Oh, I'm fine, I was. Jeremy, do you have anything you want to talk here?
That is. Oh. Whose file is it?
Uh, it's my file, but uh given this. Hearing.
Yeah.
Yeah, I need to.
Go ahead, Jeremy.
Thank you, Commissioners, um, Jeremy Grimm for the record, whiskey rock planning, um, I believe you have uh in your file, uh, letter from I D L, uh, we reached out to them. Um, last week and on that front page, um. To quote that last paragraph, the. Idaho Department of Lands is no objection to the vacation of the public right of way at the end of Hidden Valley Road. Uh, you also asked us to um. Give some thought to consideration and uh public benefit and I would just uh reiterate that because. This road when originally petition was not created as a parcel, um, there is no taxable value, um, the, the. The uh property owners have been paying taxes on this, on this uh essentially easement. And um, the public benefit if vacated would be a. A hopeful reduction in police service calls and the establishment of a turnaround. Uh, towards the end of that road where there is not a turnaround today. So uh with that, answer any questions you have, um. Uh, otherwise, I think we've gotten you everything you. Were hoping to see.
Any questions for you, Jeremy?
So, one of the things that Jason, I think it brought up, or no, Jason Topit brought up was talking about the turnaround and that the fact that, that. Applicants would have to. Not only.
Yep, not just dedicate, that's correct, and they are prepared to do that, yep.
Any other questions? Hey, does anyone else wish to speak, uh, do the applicants wish to speak to this or? Good? Okay. Um, since it is a continuation, actually, I know we don't have to public comment, but. Is there anybody does wish to speak or against or? Is neutral on this, uh? Let me know. Public comment. I see none, so we'll go ahead and close for deliberation. Yeah, I think the, the only piece we were missing by our request was this uh acknowledgement from. I D L and we've got it in hand now, so. Um, I think all the facts are still the, exactly the same as they were when we heard it. Before, so I have no problem with uh. Going ahead and prove this.
Yeah, there's um actually two things that we asked for and then the third was the turnaround.
Right.
Um, that was answered. Second, one was about. The value, um, and. Jeremy addressed the, the. This is never a separate parcel, so that. Um. Apparently, they. Got to pay taxes on it for the last however many years they've worked for it, so I'm alright with that too. The reality of it is. None of you ever really had it.
Okay, for a part.
Uh, my, my questions have been.
Okay, Steve, anything uh moving ahead? Okay, well, with that, then I will go ahead and entertain motion.
Move to approve this. Edition file V S zero zero zero. One back two two. Vacate of Fort Hidden Valley Road based on the following conclusion. Decision is based on the evidence submitted at the time staff. This might receive at this hearing. That further moves to adopt the findings, facts and conclusions of law as set forth in staff report. Direct planning staff to draft written findings. Reflect this. Motion and transmit to all interested parties, the action that could be taken to obtain the vacation. Lead the conditions of the program adopted. Action does not result in taking the price of property. Want to cut the motion?
Yeah, we have a motion, a second, uh, roll call vote. Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
And motion passes and I'll go and entertain the uh resolution adoption.
I moved to approve resolution. Three twenty two dash nine, I have locating. In Valley Road located. As shown on the. Inside plan.
An official motion?
Hey, we have a motion, a second roll call vote. Aye?
Aye.
I agree.
And that motion passes and that concludes that file. That was way too easy. Sure, now let's go ahead and move on to.
True, thank you.
Move on to uh Z C zero zero one one dash two two. And Commissioner Bradshaw is recusing himself. This one, so. Staff can begin with them.
Okay, Commissioners. Um, we're just discuss uh zone change from rural five to suburban this afternoon. So Border County Revised Code twelve two one six. Uh, staff and governing bodies shall review the particular facts and circumstances. Of each proposal submitted. And shall determine whether there is adequate evidence that the proposal is in accordance with the general and the specific objectives of the comprehensive plan. On our county revised code twelve dash. Three two zero point one. Um, gives us purpose statements for each zoning designation and those are set forth um to allow staff. Or allows. Uh, the application to be guided by staff um on the designations. So little background, the applicant is requesting his own change from rural five to suburban for the purpose of gifting two and a half acres. The request was evaluated against standards for the rural five district and suburban district. Parcel is currently comprehensive plan transitioned. We're talking about an unplanted uh parcel this afternoon, that's nine point two three acres, zone rural five, and the land use designation. Is transition, access to this parcels off Coca-Cola Loop, which is a border county owned, maintained right away. Direct ass, access is on Hatcher Road, a privately owned and maintained road. So the suburban district. Um. Use of the suburban, or sorry, use of this zone is appropriated in areas. Designated by the comprehensive plan as transition, urban growth area, resort community, or suburban growth area in the comprehensive plan. Where a network of hard surface roads provide good access to primary transportation routes or potential public transportation systems. Urban ser- services may not be available immediately, but are capable of being extended or constructed in the area. So looking at the definition of transition in the comprehensive plan. The transition classification is reserved for those areas in the county where a mixture of land uses can occur. Which may include high density residential uses, commercial, industrial, light, industrial uses. Due to the intensity of the land, these areas require primary transportation routes, urban like water. And sewer, sewer services, fire and police services. We see the parcel highlighted there in yellow, it's already in the transition designation by the comp plan. These are the standards um for which this parcel was reviewed against, it's already. Developed at or near one dwelling unit per five acres, so it meets that criteria. Um, we look to see. If it can move to the designation of suburban, um. By the trend, by the comp plan. For transition, it's served by a network of hard surface roads and has the capability of having urban services. Some environmental factors on this property are pretty much non-existent, doesn't contain any map slopes, does not contain any map wetlands, does not contain any waterfront or streams. It's in special flood hazard zone X. Uh, services currently available on this parcel are an individual well, individual septic system. Fire protection is afforded through South Kirk Fire District. Power is afforded through Northern Lights and is within. School District number eighty four. These are the agencies that were routed. For comment, Idaho Department of Water Resources, Pennell District, and Bonner County, Road Bridge, all commented. All the other agencies. Did not comment at all. No public comments were received on this proposal. So looking at the standards for review, um, we've learned that the designation for this parcel is already transitioned for the comprehensive plan. It is served by a network of hard surface roads. It does have urban service capabilities. Findings and facts have not changed since the time the staff report was prepared, nor have the conclusions of law. Staff found that this proposal is consistent with the Bonner County Revised Code, the zoning commission. Voted unanimously to recommend approval on this project. That includes my presentations, Commissioners, I can take any questions.
Any questions for staff?
Um, hard surface road. That Hatcher Road, that would, it's kind of.
Uh, Coca-Cola Road would be the hard service road as well as I ninety five. So.
Fair enough. I guess. This leaves me the question is. Talking about service by, and I, I mean, to me that means right in it or not?
So. There's the definition um out of the code or. It to go to suburban and because it has the land use designation. By the comprehensive plan or transition, we look at letter B. In the code. So looking at that sentence, um. In the comprehensive plan where a network of hardware. Hard surface roads provide good access. To primary transportation routes or potential public transportation systems.
Was Hatcher County Maintain Road?
It's not, is it private road privately maintained? And I'm sure the applicant could speak more to the, that particular surface of the road. Um, when I was by there. It's hard surfaced. Far as gravel, mm hmm.
Okay, we can go on then. Any other questions?
Oh, so, sorry, you're out Steve. Okay, never mind.
I think.
Well, we're gonna give you a chance. So um, what we're gonna do now is we're gonna go to the owner's representative of the owner, if they wish to speak. That would be you. All you have to do is identify your name for the record.
Janet Hatcher.
Okay, yeah, go ahead.
Um, well, we maintain the roads, it's a loop road. It loops around Hatcher Road and then goes to the back. Um, we keep it snowplowed and everything. Or. You know, fire, whatever, as a matter of fact, the fire truck and ambulance made it up there a couple times. What else do you need to know?
Anything you want to tell us?
Well, we're just struggling with the garbage that our home codes, so. When it talks about or our contact. Talks about. Jake, isn't it mostly public road and? Hard surface? Or? I mean, you drop down into. That density. Don't see it, but that, so if it goes below.
Two and a half.
Point five, right, that's where it has the fun times, so.
Yeah, below two and a half, you have to have hard service.
The problem is, is what we're doing is we're zoning it suburban.
Right.
But there, there's no restriction, they can't go.
Well, what happens when they, if they wanted, if they wanted to, yeah, if they wanted to. Well, what happens is when they, if they wanted, if they wanted to, yeah, if they wanted to split it to parcel less than two and a half, then they would have to bring up the. You'd have to pave a section of road going into the hard service section.
And it'd have to be. Got to be sufficient for the volume of.
But that would happen during the.
It is gravelled, it is solid.
Right, it's, we're just. I mean, when I. You beat that up there, that's what we have to do is make sure that. And the law says it has to be hard service, then we'd have to require that, but the definition is.
Yeah, and if you ever want to go below two and a half, then that's something you look at, we look at that at the, during the split of the B O P.
Yeah, we'd never go below two and a half.
We understand you're trying to accomplish, we have to make sure.
Well, everybody has fantastic sewers, I mean, um, wells there, our wells are like, not that deep and lots of water.
Anything else you want to add?
I don't know.
Well, we will reserve the right, Chris Colley and I will reserve the right to ask questions if something comes up during.
I will answer him truthfully.
Okay, good.
I was even truthful enough to say that Steve was my brother-in-law.
I can't, I can't believe. Your opportunity to say I have no idea who he is, I don't claim him.
Well, he married me and my husband.
Did he really?
He must like you.
Yeah, so he even voted for me, so we put him out.
So, now that we've got to do that. Uh, will, will you open it up for, is he owner? Okay, well, what I'll do is I'll open it up for public comment, he can speak during that, so let's go ahead and do that, anybody else wish to speak? In favor of this, uh, this file? That's your opportunity. If you're in favor of it. If not, I have a funny feeling she may take you down in the hallway, so, can you go to the microphone, sir, and make sure you identify your name for the record?
Yes, my name is Mike Eaton and I've been a friend of the Bradshaw. Hatcher family for many years now, and I've got to know these people on a very personal level. And, uh.
And you still like?
They're great people, now, is that, I just wanted to stand up here and tell you that. All the years that this family's been here for generations. And they've been a positive, uh, family in this community. They donated the land that the church is on, the, the Bible camp. They've given it and they want to give this lot to the pastor of the church. Came from Arkansas, where property is worth about a tenth of what it is here. The young man needs to build a home, which he wouldn't be able to afford. Except Jan has graciously offered to give this lot to him. And, um, I just really am in support the opportunity for him to be able to get that and, and that, uh. The Commissioners sees fit to allow this to go through. Thanks a lot.
Anyone else wish to speak in favor? But, same rule, make sure you identify your name for the record. Make sure you identify if you're a relative or not, no, I'm just kidding.
Not a relative, very close friend, but actually a neighbor, I live right on the corner of Coca-Cola and Hatcher Road. And, uh, but then to have, uh, to make it where, you know, the residents come in like that, I think that's good, it's not over. Populating it too, you know, much, it's making it nice and, and they're all good people, we just love to have them, but. We, we like our neighbors and we're all for whatever she wants to do. Mary Ann Shepherd.
Okay, anyone else which speak in favor? See none, anyone neutral? Who's gonna be online that, no, okay, anyone opposed? Steve, you want to be opposed? No, you're, you're technically not here, so. Okay, hearing none, we'll go ahead and close for deliberation, yeah, I don't, I mean, it's, it's on transit, it's already a comp plan transition. Perfect fit, I think everything's good there, yep.
The, the one thing that I would add is just, you know, when we're going through these things. But once you ring this bell, you know, that this is zone suburban, then even though the use may be a. One home on two and a half acres, if, if, if this parcel can be used in the. Down to twelve thousand or feet, so. Just, that's part of what we deal with is trying to look at the bigger picture and, and.
No, well, it's not, no, no, that's not. We have, no, it's not, it's just something we look at.
I understand and agree fully with where you're coming.
Okay, well, uh, any, any other comments? Okay, let's go ahead and close deliberation and I will entertain a motion for approval.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I move to approve, uh, this project file Z C zero zero. Zero zero one one dash two two, requesting a zone change from rural five to suburban. Finding that it is in accordance with general and specific objective. The Bonner County Comprehensive Plan, Bonner County Revised Code is enumerated in the following conclusions of law. And based upon the evidence submitted up to the time, staff report was prepared. Testimony received at this hearing. I further move to adopt the findings and facts and conclusions of law as set forth in the staff report. And direct planning staff to draft written finding and conclusions to reflect this motion. Have the chairman sign and transmit to all interested parties, this action does not result in the taking of credit.
Yeah, and I will step down from the chair in a second, roll call vote. Motion passes and now let's do the zone change ordinance motion.
Chairman, I move to approve the ordinance of Bonner County Idaho, the number to be assigned citing its authority. Providing for the amendment of the official zoning map of Bonner County by reclassification of the lands. Section five township fifty-five north, range five west, Boise Meridian, Bonner County Idaho, from rural five to suburban. And providing for an effective date, I further move to authorize the chair sign the official supplementary zoning map. On publication of the ordinance.
You say range five? Range two, I, I thought I already said five, I just want to make sure for the record, it's. Section five township fifty-five north, range two west, and it might have been me, I might have. Anyway, it is, it's starting to go, I just, I just got glasses and now I gotta get a hearing aid. I am getting up there, so, I will step down from the chair in a second. Uh, roll call vote.